Welcome to the November 17th regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. If you can take a moment to silence your cellphone and then join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jen, can you take role, please?
President Roush.
Here.
Vice President McFarland.
Here.
Secretary Ringold is here. Treasurer Lauterbach is not. Trustee Blazy.
Here.
Trustee Craig.
Here.
Trustee Horowitz.
Present.
Thank you. Moving on to our agenda for tonight. Item two is the consent agenda, 2.1, approval of minutes from the October 17th, 2025 special meeting. October 17th, 2025 closed session and the October 20th, 2025 regular meeting. Item 2.2 are recommendations for hire as listed in your agenda packet. Item 2.3 are resignations from the following staff as listed in your agenda packet with the effective dates listed. Item 2.4 financials, approval of the payment of the school systems bills for the month of September 2025 as listed in the check registers prepared by Ms. Holderby. In the total amount of $9,259,957 is recommended. The distribution of obligations by fund is included in the documentation. And finally, item 2.5, legal payments, approval is requested to authorize legal payments to the below list of professional legal fees as listed in your agenda packet. Can I have a motion to approve items 2.1 through 2.5?
I'll move to approve items 2.1 to through 2.5 on the consent agenda.
Support.
Motion by McFarland, support by Horowitz. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of approving items 2.1 through 2.5, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, presentations to the board, 3.1, Shining Stars.
Let's see who's first. Well, Eric, it's you. Come on up and stand by me. Our first shining star of the evening is Eric Smith. Congratulations. Eric began his MPS journey in 2008 when he was hired as a workstation technician in the tech department here at MPS, and then he transitioned to a support specialist, the position that he currently holds with the district. Eric was nominated for his second shining star by MPS parents and colleagues, and among their comments are the following. Eric advocates for his team and works with them to problem solve. He's proactive and consistently presents thoughtful solutions while also encouraging team members to develop ideas as well. Another person who nominated Eric. I submitted a ticket for a lost or stolen Chromebook. Eric promptly responded and advised me of the last pinged location of the device, which was the Midland High Community Stadium. Is this ringing a bell? I figured it would. Eric reached out to the Midland High Athletic Director and asked him to help search the locker room that afternoon. But he actually went to the stadium himself and searched everything. Trash cans, bottle returns, bleachers, everywhere high and low. And I was honestly shocked that someone would go to those lengths to help me and my family recover the Chromebook. It warmed my heart. For these reasons and so many more, Eric is one of our shining stars this month. Congratulations, Eric. And you just get the smiles from this group. Oh, you get the, all right, I like this. I mean, he is in the building here with us every day, and I'll just make a little personal comment. Eric is one of our team members who, when I have a little need and I can't quite figure something out, he doesn't roll his eyes at me, he doesn't shake his head at me. He just comes up to my office and helps me out with a smile, and I really appreciate that. All right, our second shining star is Michael Weber. Come on up. Here you are. All right, Michael's career highlights include joining our team in 2021 as a music teacher at Adams Elementary. And you can see Ms. Renfro over there taking some photos. And this is the position that Michael currently holds in our district today. Michael earned his Master of Arts degree from Wayne State University. Michael, you were nominated for your shining star by colleagues, and here are some of the comments. Each morning, Mike can be found at the front door greeting students. His welcoming presence sets the tone for the day, and at dismissal, he is right back at the doors, often walking students to after-school care. Mike's commitment extends beyond daily routines. He plans engaging, high-quality, grade-level music performances and invites families to celebrate student learning by providing live streaming to those who are unable to attend. When music class time increased to the full hour that we have each week, Mike didn't miss a beat, pun intended, so whoever wrote this is clever, and immediately began planning how to work with Adams' youngest learners through those longer lessons to keep them fully engaged. He incorporated mindfulness strategies, movement breaks, and even centers to keep students regulated and fully engaged. Michael's dedication, creativity, and genuine care for our students and school community make him a shining star, and we are all better off having him on our team. Congratulations.
There it is.
Love it.
In shining stars, you were welcome to exit as part of your extra special gift for today. And you're also welcome to stay.
Thanks, Eric. Congratulations, Eric and Michael. Thank you for everything. Next up is item 3.2, Spotlight on Excellence from Plymouth Elementary. We have Principal Doan and some of our staff.
All right, thank you guys for having us here. We're excited. My team is really going to do all of the talking today, which makes me the most excited about this presentation. I'm going to introduce them, and then they're going to be talking about a unique experience that only occurs in second grade at Plymouth, but it is a very collaborative event. On the team, we have Rose Breggy, Laura Van Buskirk, and Ann Lang. So I'm going to go ahead and step back and hand it off to Ann.
Hello, thank you for your time today. I teased Margaret and told her I was going to wrap this out. She looked really nervous, but I'm not going to wrap it. But I did get some comments from the students and told them we were coming today, and here are some of their comments. And I asked them, what does play invitation mean to you? One said, you can get energy out and play with friends. Another says, it means we're special because no other grades get to do it. One says, it's a fun break before we learn. The other said, the woods is a peaceful place to walk. And I'm going to turn that over.
So a couple years ago, in 2023, one of our before-school PD days included some play-based learning for us from Lynn Cossaro. And we sat through it. We were honestly a little skeptical at first, and it really resonated with us as we were sitting and listening. And as the presentation came to an end, we decided that this was something we would love to try to incorporate into our day. There was a lot of trial and error at first, and we're happy to say that three years in, we feel really confident at what we get to present our kiddos with every morning. It is the first 30 minutes of our day, and we do it collaboratively as a grade level. Not only are they learning while they play, but they are definitely getting ready to learn and learning to learn while they're playing, which is awesome. We do also a lot of collaborative problem-solving activities, a lot of play-based activities that are incorporated into our units of study, so it's a great way to start the day and set us off on the right foot.
So like Laura said, it's 30 minutes each morning, all weather, and we know that this is a developmentally appropriate practice. It remains vital for learning beyond kindergarten. So our second graders still need those hands-on imaginative opportunities to learn. We found creativity, communication, collaboration, and critical thinking are really cultivated through this open-ended play that they're allowed to do each day. It supports their self-regulation and social-emotional skills, just kind of naturally as they work together. It also allows them to grow as a team, not just in second grade, but beyond. And it also allows us as teachers to really work together and know all of our second graders, not just our own class.
So we work collaboratively as a team to plan out what our play invitations look like. It's not just random and spontaneous. It's definitely purposeful and planned ahead of time. We try to embed literacy as often as possible. Like I said earlier, we connect it with our units of inquiry and our learner profile skills, so we're building their person as well as their learning. We do a lot of work on balance. Not every student enjoys every type of activity, so we try and balance throughout the week and throughout the month, so everyone gets an opportunity and is invited to engage in something that they really love. And then they also have a little bit of a push to participate in something that maybe they wouldn't have chosen on their own right away. We see a lot of growth from them as a team from beginning of the year to the end of the year. They definitely become better risk-takers as the year goes on. And we work hard to make sure that our, oh, thank you, sorry. We work hard to make sure that it's purposeful and planned for us as well. We make sure that ahead of time, we know exactly what's going to happen throughout the month. We have the supplies that we need, and we ask those people who we also need help or assistance or items from with plenty of time so that they can engage with us. We also make sure that every day follows its typical structure. So Mondays, for example, we always go out to the woods and we invite them to explore the woods. Today, we had balance beams. We had people who were making teeter totters out of big sticks and stuff like that, which was really cool because they were working together and everyone was having a great time. We have two days of the week that are based inside, three days of the week that are based outside. And on Thursdays, we really try to make sure that we include a multicultural calendar of events. We celebrate groups of people. We celebrate workers of all kinds related to our units of inquiry. We also study or we explore fun things, like last year, we voted on our favorite chocolate chip or kind of chip for National Chocolate Chip Day, all kinds of things to engage different people. But then we voted on things and made graphs and charts to go with it. So we try and engage our learning along with their creativity, which is a lot of fun.
And as you can see from this slide, there are many learning outcomes. I believe that we're inspiring future excavators, engineers, builders, and much, much more. When you watch these kids engage, they are, all of them, all 65 strong, are engaged in something totally different, whatever lights their fire. So I'm excited that we are inspiring them to do something that they don't normally do.
And to wrap us up, we're talking about the partnerships that we have created at Plymouth. This year, we hosted our very first Title I Family Engagement Morning, and we had about 90% of families join us for a couple hours of just open-ended play with their student. And I thought that was like so powerful because as a parent myself, I know how easy it is to just kind of get lost. And so it was really fun to just watch them play with their kids. Chartwell's catered breakfast for us, which was wonderful. And the Science Resource Center has also provided supplies for us, both consumable that they send to us annually and then materials that we can reuse. And finally, the PTO has graciously granted us with board games and loose parts and other reusable things like snow sleds and ball toss games. So play invitation has really been a great opportunity for us to utilize our community resources that we didn't necessarily know that we had until we reached out. So thank you for your time.
And one more thing, I'm going to wrap this. No, I'm kidding you. But I would like to thank Whitney Jacobs. She's a big supporter. She wouldn't come up here with us, but she is part of this team, and she pretty much helps us keep things moving, so raise the roof for her.
All right, what questions do you have?
I have one. It looks like an amazing program, and I noticed on that calendar there was nothing involving screen time, and I think that is absolutely wonderful. I love to see that. And my question is, have you gotten any feedback from parents who say, hey, maybe my son or daughter comes home now and actually wants to play versus looking at a tablet or watching a movie or picking up a cellphone?
That's a great question. I don't know that we've gotten any specific parent feedback, but we haven't gotten any negative feedback. So sometimes the naysayers speak louder, so no?
We did get some really positive feedback from parents that engaged with us for that Title I morning. I mean, I thought they just got to see what we do every day, and we had a craft station. The woods was open, our mud kitchens were out, and our loose parts were out. And we didn't have anybody say like, wow, this is not worthwhile, you know, this is not worthwhile. And so it was really fun to watch them just engage with their kids.
That's great. Thank you.
I did have a parent. They told me that couldn't talk much, but I did have a parent say that their child comes to school out of the bed much quicker because this starts right away. So there's no more of that tug of, you got to get up, you got to get up.
I'll give you some parent feedback from last year. So my son was in Ms. Van Buskirk's class last year, and you know, when as a parent, you ask your kid, how'd today go? And what'd you guys do at school today? And it's always, I don't know, nothing, good. I always heard about play invitation, and it was really neat to hear about a lot of the things that you listed out. He doesn't use these words like agency and creativity, but he does talk about working together with other students, exploring the woods, you know, collaboration. He loved the scavenger hunts. That was always his favorite. He always talked about the scavenger hunts, and he's our checklist kid, so he always had to go finish his checklist. But it was always neat to see regardless of weather, that they're always outside, adapt, you know, building resiliency in our students as well. So and then I think the other thing that he really enjoyed doing was going to his grandfather's workshop and collecting loose parts for donations. So it was a whole family engagement, so it was pretty cool.
Well, this program sounds amazing. What's the thought process behind second grade?
So the professional development was offered to kindergarten through second-grade teachers. And after listening to our presenter, I mean, she presented a lot on like the neuroscience behind play and how much time children should be playing, like open-ended. And it wasn't ever a you have to do this kind of thing. We really were like, I think we can do this, and we tried to make it work in our schedule. And something that we learned from the PD was that if they play, like playing early sets them up for the rest of the day. And so we wanted to kind of test that theory. And so our bell rings at 8:50, day starts 8:55, 9 o'clock, we are doing play invitation. So 9 to 9:30 is our morning, and phonics comes right after. So at 9:30, when we come inside, we start our phonics instruction. And we've seen better focus, like they're just ready to learn because they've had an opportunity to be at school and play together. So why just second grade? We were the ones that kind of said, let's do it. And I wish everybody would. Like, I think it's a really cool thing, and I think it does help our kids.
Anybody else?
Can I just add on to that? It's a great question. I think these are the times when we share research and information with teachers, and then we get uptake from this amazing team of second-grade teachers. They experience it. They have these wonderful outcomes. Then we have a principal and an executive team that supports others to take the same risk and give it a try. And that's the most sustainable kind of change is when teachers choose this. So I suspect that we'll continue to share this story. I'll also share with the board, our pre-primary center has really steeped themselves in play-based. Our curriculum subcommittee last year, Study Committee, went down there and actually had an experience with loose parts and doing a play-based activity that made some of us even a little uncomfortable, but we navigated it. And they're doing remarkable work there, too. It's not always outside. Sometimes it's indoors with the loose parts, but I think this is going to catch fire here, and we're going to see lots of others pick this up. And I just want to be clear that we absolutely consider this to be valuable learning time. This isn't a glorified recess. It's not as structured as a learning environment in the classroom, which is what makes it beautiful and effective, but it is absolutely learning time.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much, and thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is item 3.3, which is a special presentation from Penny.
All right, well, the banner's being displayed, and Tila's walking on up here to stand next to me. Come on. And her entire team is here to join us as well. We have such a special, special presentation. Tila was awarded Principal of the Year, and we are so excited and proud of her. Before we share some words, I thought it might be extra nice to just watch the initial part of the video. This was a surprise, and Brad was there to see it himself. It genuinely was a surprise. So let's just watch the first little part of this video. Maybe. The gym was filled with students and staff. Pep fans playing. The whole band, thank you, playing. And you can be here with a little tiny, warm, like little tunnel to welcome you. So it was a super, super fun day, wonderful celebration. The Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals each year accepts nominations for Principal of the Year. And we know we have great people across our district and really want to make an effort to lift those people up. And this was one of our first opportunities to do that. It was a challenge to keep it a secret. This team back here was incredibly helpful, as was Mary Marshall, and I think we pulled it off. Genuine surprise that you could see. So I want to share just a few excerpts. It required letters of nomination from a student or multiple students, colleagues, staff members, supervisors, as well as community members. And we're not going to read all those, but here are a few excerpts. Tila leads with heart and genuine care, fostering a culture of belonging, joy, and success. She works to create an environment in which every student feels included and has an opportunity to thrive. She takes the same approach with staff, providing opportunities for reflection, collaboration, and leadership. Jim Worley, a teacher at Midland High, commented on how Tila encourages teachers to break out of their silos and truly collaborate, which creates that atmosphere of professional respect and a drive for personal excellence. Dave McPeak, another teacher, noted how Tila inspires students to set high expectations and to think about the responsibility that they have to make an impact in their school community. Kim Bicheski, a community member and KEMIC parent, described how Tila leads with compassion and vision and has the qualities that inspire everyone around her. Mary Doan, a student leader at Midland High, wrote how Ms. Sherman makes herself accessible and can be found in hallways during lunch periods, making conversation with students and genuinely getting to know them. Melanie Waskovich, another parent, KEMIC volunteer, might have summed it up best by stating that Tila makes a real difference in the lives of our students every single day. In addition to creating a positive culture, because a lot of that is what we know to be true about Tila, her care, her heart, the way that she really wants to build a culture and continue to extend that culture across the school community, there are really tangible things that were brought forth in her nomination. Brian wrote a beautiful letter talking about how Tila really works to support student growth and learning. She has been a champion for reimagining elements of our special education delivery model to increase access and opportunity for students. That she has been a champion for our student advisory model that we've been implementing and working across town at Dow High to help make that happen as well. And that she continues to productively challenge everyone around her to bring their best every day for students. What's really exciting is Tila is now off to represent our entire state at the National Association of Secondary School Principals, and that happens at the conference in Washington DC later this spring. We are all just incredibly inspired and proud that Tila Sherman is the Principal of the Year. And we have, oh, look at, all right. And we're extra fortunate that Congresswoman Kristin McDonald-Rivett reached out and wanted to offer her congratulations as well, and we're so happy that Kennedy can be here to say a few words.
So I'm here on behalf of the Congresswoman's office. She couldn't be here with us today, unfortunately, but we are presenting Principal Sherman with a proclamation today to award her for her accomplishment and to thank her for representing our district in DC in the spring.
She promised me I wouldn't have to speak, and so they keep putting a microphone in front of me when I'm not prepared, which I don't like. I genuinely love my job, like to my core, I love my job. I love Midland High, my students, they're, aren't they cute? Those are all mine. This is overwhelming. Everyone keeps asking, how you doing? I don't, I would really like to just crawl in a hole and disappear for a minute, just because it's overwhelming. I don't like to talk about myself at all. But what I hope that this recognition does is lift up Midland High and Midland Public Schools because this genuinely is a phenomenal place to work. We have areas to grow, of course, but we're all a family that strive to break down barriers for students that really shouldn't exist at all, especially if they're created by the structure in which we built. So that's really, our motivation is to tear down those barriers and to, I think, Dan presented my words a little, actually really well today in the Midland Daily News when he said that I wanted to disrupt things. I do in a good way, in a good way. My goal is to disrupt the structure that is, like this hierarchical structure where people feel that they can't move up and students have this false narrative in their head that they're not capable or they don't belong or they can't achieve because it's not true. So the adults in their lives, if it's not the ones at home, or even if it is, it's our job to really lift them up. And so how stinking lucky are we that we get to be a part of that? And so that's cool, but the work is done in the day-to-day when we're sitting on the bathroom floors with students telling them that they can get through this or we're buying them clothes or we're celebrating how amazing they are. That is, that is why what we do, what we do. This is awesome until Chris and I said, thank you. I'll speak to her later about not being here. But it's awesome.
And can the students in the crowd tell me what Ms. Sherman's part of the Friday saying is?
If you don't know the gender.
Come on. Chemics. I'll help you with it. Chemics. You determine your legacy. What will it be? Well, Ms. Sherman sure does, has already established a legacy, and we're excited to see you continue to grow. And I just want to say thank you. All right. Next on the list for tonight is Agenda Item 3.4, which is an update on school safety from Kara.
While they're getting ready, you know, we, it feels like we, as a team, talk about school safety a lot. Weekly, for sure, and we recognize that it's been a little bit since we've brought you all a refresher. You're going to hear how we did some professional learning recently, Kara stepping into this role to lead our school safety efforts. We've just had an opportunity to revisit a lot of the information and thought it would be a great chance for you to do that as well. We have updated our emergency operation plans, as you'll hear, and we'll be bringing those to the board as part of our January organizational meeting, and plan to do that regularly from this point forward as part of that organizational meeting.
Thanks, Kara. Yes. Good evening. I'm thrilled to be here with Matt Wenzel, Assistant Principal at Midland High, and Officer Ryan Baxter, one of our school resource officers. Together, we're excited to present how Midland Public Schools is leading the way in empowering school safety. Our goal here is to ensure a safe and thriving environment for all of our students and staff. We believe that safety is a foundational aspect and to our effective learning and teaching. We come from various roles within our school district to provide you with a comprehensive view of our safety initiatives. Each of us are going to share insights from our respective areas of expertise, highlighting the unique contributions we make towards enhancing school safety. So we're going to dive into Midland Public Schools' commitment to safety and explore the proactive steps we're taking to achieve our goals. In today's rapidly changing world, prioritizing school safety is essential. This section outlines the significance of creating secure environments for students and staff while focusing on building relationships. Together, these elements foster resilience and enhance overall safety in educational The safety framework is built around four key components: prevention, preparedness, response, and recovery. So let's talk about the ALICE method, an important part of our safety training protocols. The purpose of the ALICE method is to empower everyone, staff, students, and families, to make informed decisions during a crisis. The acronym ALICE stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, Evacuate. Each component plays a crucial role in ensuring safety. Remember, we're not just preparing individuals to react, but to think critically in high-stress situations. Training for this method includes staff professional development, student drills that are age-appropriate, and family communication. It's a comprehensive approach that involves everyone in the school community. As we move forward, think about how these drills and communications can help build a culture of preparedness and resilience. This training is a key part of our broader, broader emergency operation plans, which we'll talk about next. So our emergency operation plans, this image highlights our standard response protocol language that is utilized during an emergency. Using the common language across the district and with state police helps ensure efficiency and clarity when identifying the roles of staff and students. These plans are crucial because they cover all hazards, ensuring we're prepared for anything that comes our way. We have two levels of EOPs, our building-specific and district-wide components. This distinction allows us to tailor our response to the unique needs of each school while maintaining a cohesive district strategy. A vital part of our EOPs is our communication protocols. We need to ensure clear communication with staff, students, families, and community partners. This keeps everyone informed and safe during an emergency. We have been highlighting different parts of the standard response protocols in our Forward Together communication as well, so that families can become familiar with the language. Finally, remember that these plans are not static. They require an annual review and updates to remain effective and relevant. This also just provides a snapshot of the EOP and its table of contents, and we have one of these for every single building. And then more specifically, it breaks down for each classroom. There's a specific guide to support if we have guest teachers in the building or anyone visiting. It's easy to access as well with a version of this. I now want to introduce you, one of our four school resource officers, Officer Ryan Baxter.
My role at Midland High School is unique. As the school resource officer, obviously I provide a visual presence of security and safety, not only to the students but to the staff as well. But the role is a lot bigger than just a police officer in a uniform and a marked patrol unit out in the parking lot. In the morning, I'm in the front entrance to the building, greeting the students as they enter, you know, seeing who had a good day or who had a good weekend. Throughout the school day, I'm visible in the halls, communicating with students, giving presentations in classrooms. And I'm very fortunate to be in a building where the leadership supports and ensures that I'm viewed as an extension of their team and not an outsider. My biggest priority in the school is to help students understand why I'm there, what my role is. And I harp on this. My role is not to issue discipline or to get them involved in the core system in any way. My focus there is safety, building relationships, and early intervention. A majority of my time is spent just talking with students, getting to know them, building trust with them, building those relationships. I aim to be a resource to these students, somebody that they can seek out whenever they need help, guidance, or any other concerns that maybe they have. This role and this partnership between Midland Public Schools and the Midland Police Department, it's special. It allows an open line of communication, and the collaboration ensures that we address safety priorities and concerns together quickly and efficiently as well. Also, inside the school, I help with the ALICE instruction, and I'm also part of the threat assessment team, which is something that Mr. Wenzel will talk to you about.
Thank you, Officer Baxter. Tonight, I'm going to provide an overview of our district's threat assessment team and how they support school safety. MPS identified the need for this process to be formalized. Three years ago, we initiated our threat assessment structure. The threat assessment structure includes individuals, which consists of a multidisciplinary team, to ensure we get a full picture of a situation. A building administrator, a school mental health professional, counselor, or social worker plays a key role in understanding students' needs. Our school resource office will provide safety, expertise, and coordination. Teachers are pulled in when they have direct knowledge of a student. We also include special education staff or behavior specialists when appropriate. Teams meet regularly and use standardized, evidence-based protocols to maintain accuracy and consistency. The process begins with a referral. Anyone can report a concern, students, staff, or parents. A referral can include a variety of situations. For example, it could be a social media post. It could be a self-harm incident, or it could be a threat of violence. The team reviews the information to determine if it's low-level concern or if it requires a full assessment. When needed, we use a structured, research-based assessment tool that considers behavior, context, access to means, stressors, and protective factors. Plans are student-centered. They may include mental health supports, academic adjustments, increased supervision, or discipline if appropriate. The focus is always on matching the support to the need. The team monitors progress over time and adjusts the plan when necessary. All steps are documented. This helps ensure fidelity to the model and allows us to track trends at both the building and the district level. Threat assessment does not operate in isolation. It is fully integrated into our MTSS and our behavior support systems. It connects directly with our mental health services, restorative practices, and traditional discipline processes. A strong threat assessment team process or process helps ensure students receive the right support at the right time. This approach reduces reliance on exclusionary discipline by addressing the underlying needs driving concerning behavior. It also strengthens coordination among schools, families, and community partners. Overall, this holistic, proactive model that enhances school safety while supporting student well-being. I also like to think of this as a scale. On one side of the scale includes the physical investments, like evolve system, the cameras, our door boots, the raptor system, zero eyes, just to name a few. On the other side of the scale, I see your investment in human resources, like our SRO, student support specialists, counselors, and training for admin that in turn trains staff. It is clear to me that the continued investment in human resources fosters the foundation for what we do at MPS, and this is creating meaningful relationships. Officer Baxter is going to illustrate where these processes and resources were aligned to ensure our school community is safe.
Just a quick story. A few years ago, we had an incident. Several students came down to the main office, and they were reporting a threat against Midland High that they saw on social media. Ten, twenty, maybe even thirty students, there were several students that came down. They came down immediately. Because of this, we were able to identify who the student was and to verify and confirm that the student was not on any school property at all, wasn't at Midland High, was not on any MPS property. I was able to locate the student, collect all the necessary evidence, and actually obtain a confession while their guardian was there. Before the end of the school day, the investigation was completed. The student was lodged at the Juvenile Justice Care Center, and I was at the department. I was dressed out of my uniform, and I was walking out of the building, and I received a phone call on my work cellphone. It was a special agent with the FBI. He was calling me to make me aware of the threat that we had just investigated. And I kind of cut him off a little bit, and I said, "We found out about this hours ago. The investigation is done, student was identified, and they're at the juvenile center." He was blown away. He said that it is very, very rare that a local law enforcement agency is notified before them, let alone can complete the investigation and have the suspect determined and detained at the juvenile center. He also went on to say that he is a member of the school district. He resides in the school district, and he has a couple of students, a couple of children. And he was so happy and so thankful because of this partnership and this relationship and what it brings with school safety. So when there is these, these positive relationships that we have with the students, they trust us, and they report things immediately. And the speed of that reporting is really what prevents it from escalating, and it keeps the entire building safe.
So building connections, to go off of what they were saying, is at the heart of creating a safe and supportive school environment. It's all about relationships among the students, staff, families, and our community partners. When we establish strong relationships, we pave the pathway for effective communication and trust. There are not just abstract, these are not just abstract concepts. They are the foundation that allows us to identify risks early on, which is crucial for school safety and the well-being of everyone who's involved. By fostering these connections, we're not just enhancing safety, but we're building a community where everyone feels valued and supported. It's through collaboration and mutual understanding that we create a culture of safety and care. So when we think about building connections by, we want to focus on enhancing communication and trust. This is where safe environment truly begins. Firstly, encouraging a culture of the see or hear something, say something, is crucial. It empowers everyone in the community to take action when they notice something amiss. This approach not only helps prevent potential issues, but also fosters a sense of collective responsibility. Next is transparency. By reinforcing that shared responsibility, we make it clear that every member of the school community has a role to play in maintaining safety. When everyone understands that they are part of the solution, it builds trust and encourages proactive involvement. Lastly, by building, by actively building community confidence, we bolster the overall safety net. When students, staff, families, and community partners feel confident in the systems and processes we have in place, they're more likely to engage and contribute positively. These strategies are not, are not only enhance safety, but also create an environment where everyone feels valued and heard. So we want to continue to work together to strengthen these connections. So thank you for this opportunity, and we appreciate being able to present on safety and this important topic. So what questions might you have for us?
First of all, thank you, Officer Baxter. I know it's not part of your job duty to come and present to the Board of Education, but I really appreciate it, and it's really important to me, and I think to the rest of the board, that when we started the SRO program, I don't think any of us fully appreciated what it would become today. And in particular, your, your relationship with the building leadership, I think, is a testament to what has been put in place, and I just want to say thank you to you, Mr. Wenzel, and the rest of the staff, because I think you hit the nail on the head with trust. And it's exciting to see how engaged students are with you. I don't think they've ever feel threatened by somebody in uniform, and you've been able to really break through to students in a different way than maybe they were used to. And I think the whole wraparound services with our multi-tiered system of support and making sure to follow up with students after something happens is a testament to what the district has put in place and really exciting to see. So, thank you. Anything else?
While you're all thinking of questions and comments, just want to offer my appreciation to the Midland Police Department. Our four SROs are outstanding, but that also extends to Chief Ford and her team. They are incredibly supportive of what we do and just great partners in every situation we have. And while the story you shared is one of the more serious situations we encounter, there are lots of examples where our SROs are just building such wonderful, positive connections that... what it would become today. And in particular, your relationship with the building leadership, I think, is a testament to what has been put in place. And I just want to say thank you to you, Mr. Wenzel, and the rest of the staff, because I think you hit the nail on the head with trust. And it's exciting to see how engaged students are with you. I don't think they've ever feel threatened by somebody in uniform, and you've been able to really break through to students in a different way than maybe they were used to. And I think the whole wraparound services with our multi-tiered system of support and making sure to follow up with students after something happens is a testament to what the district has put in place and really exciting to see. So, thank you.
While you're all thinking of questions and comments, just want to offer my appreciation to the Midland Police Department. Our four SROs are outstanding, but that also extends to Chief Ford and her team. They are incredibly supportive of what we do and just great partners in every situation we have. And while the story you shared is one of the more serious situations we encounter, there are lots of examples where our SROs are just building such wonderful, positive connections with students in the high schools and when they are in the elementaries as well. You know, just these last couple of football Fridays, it's been really fun to see Officer Sundberg, our SRO at Dow High, at the football games, just interacting with students in the student section. During our big Midland High Dow High game, I think everybody was on hand, interacting with the crowd, with the elementary and middle school students, and they're just a known presence and so trustworthy, but also not scary, which we really appreciate. Yeah, you're not scary. Just all around a really great partnership that we have, and I really appreciate it.
I think I'm so appreciative of that community partnership as well, because it's not always like that. There's a lot of districts where it doesn't work in that way. And I know when we started the process, there were people who were really worried about it. And so just to see the way that it's evolved and to know that in Midland Public Schools and with our community partnership with MPD, that it is about building positive relationships. I loved the, Mr. Wenzel, you mentioned the proactive approach, right? Like that we're in this capacity where we can be proactive as opposed to reactive as much as possible. So I'm just really grateful for that.
That see something, hear something, I mean, come on, students who are here, you've heard that before, right? Like, we count on our students and our entire community to be brave and say something if they are seeing or hearing something. That is our best prevention, is when we are all connected and vigilant. So we really count on our students and appreciate their support in this.
Well, and knowing that not any one student or person should hold it all when something is hard or you hear something like that, knowing that there are other trusted adults or students or people that you can go to, I think, is so, so important.
You don't have a copyright on building connections, enhancing communication and trust, do you? We might need to adopt that for five and six. Well, thank you. Moving on to item 3.5, which is strategic planning and facility planning update, just wanted to give a quick update on strategic planning, and then I'm going to turn it over for item six to our facility planning firm that we've recently hired, GMB. On strategic planning, please, if you have not done so yet, go to our MPS homepage. Right on the front page, there is a link to participate in a five-question, five-minute survey to give input on the next five years. And our partners that we've hired at OmniTech are leading us through that process. Also, on the homepage, there are various calendar events to RSVP for, to attend and give additional feedback and collaborate with others above and beyond the survey link. The next items, or, excuse me, the next calendar events on the list are November 19th, there's a parent session, November 20th, there's community input session, December 3rd, and then the team is also working on, I might have gotten the last one wrong, so I had November 19th, November 20th, November 25th written down.
November 19th is a parent session?
Yep.
The community listening session is the 20th, and there is another one on December 3rd.
Correct.
And I believe we're looking to schedule some virtual sessions.
Yep. So please take us up on participating in those forums.
Can I say something quick? Just in regards to that, too, so I've had the privilege to be able to be part of one of the community listening sessions so far, and I think it's just so, so valuable for that in-person, if you're able to come. I know as board members and our administrative team, we've been trying to have somebody from all those positions there, because we want to hear what you have to say. And I think that firsthand, not just what we are going to end up getting in the report, but actually being in the room and being able to hear from individuals who are willing to come out to those sessions is so, so important. We do also understand that people may want to be anonymous, and that that's what the online survey is for, so that if you have something that you don't feel comfortable coming out and saying to, you know, in a room where there's other people or board members or administrative staff, that option is available. So, thank you for all of the input. We need more. We want more.
Item 3.6, facility planning update. Steven, thanks for joining us.
Thanks for having us. I'm Steven Gunther. I'm from GMB, so representing the collective group of GMB, Clark, and Three Rivers tonight. So, excuse me, apologize, I'm recovering from, you know, daycare sickness cold for some of the year. Those germs travel fast in our house. We have officially established ourselves as a team and are really excited on the progress we're making and the steps forward on the road ahead. Our team includes representatives from the district, from Clark Construction, from Three Rivers, and from GMB, all of which I believe most of you have met in the past. We held our kickoff meeting in October. We reconvened in November, and we are meeting again in December and have dates scheduled for January as well. Among some of the things that we have discussed so far are lessons learned from the past, some of the strengths and challenges that the district sees. And one of our initial icebreaker conversations that we had was trying to understand each other's communication styles and to get to know each other better, so that we can make sure that we're effective as we move forward, because we do want to be a high-performing team through this entire process. And we also worked on some calendars to get all of the steps pulled together, and we'll talk about those in a few more slides. At GMB, one of our mottos is abundance in education, so we always like to reflect on what we've learned along the way. Some of the commenting themes that we have identified so far are the importance of data, details, and the thoroughness in which we will conduct our tasks. We also look forward to working with the involved community that is present in Midland. And I think one of the two most exciting things for me as a community member here in Midland is hearing how passionate the educators are and how the district strives to have opportunities for all. And I think with all the presentations that were had today, that was really highlighted as well, which is great to see the common theme that we've heard represented in the board meeting tonight. Our next steps are we are going to hit the ground running and start with our facility assessments. We have broken these up into two different groups that will be conducting the assessments. The first group will be representatives from that initial team that we talked about earlier, from Midland and GMB and Clark and Three Rivers. And what this will allow us to do is hear directly from the district and the people that work in those facilities, and what are their pain points in operating that building. And those items will eventually be incorporated into the final facility assessment. The second group that will be there will be representatives just from GMB. They will include landscape architects, licensed civil engineers, mechanical engineers, electrical engineers, and construction professionals. They will use their years of experience to evaluate the existing facilities and their conditions to make recommendations on timelines for when stuff needs to be addressed. Moving forward, looking at the next three months ahead of us, so in November, we met last week as a team, just to reconvene and touch base. Our facility assessments with the facilities team is identified in orange on these calendars, so we are doing those on the 20th, and can't see the dates from here, sorry, 25th. Those are our first two, and the GMB team is going to start theirs on the 24th. When we move into December, there's three times that each of those groups will be conducting the facility assessments, and then we will reconvene again as a full group before the holiday break. When we move into January, that's where the facility assessment side and all the, a lot of the data collection and observations will have been completed. So we will do a handoff from the GMB team to the Clark team, and the Clark team is going to work at estimating all of the items that we identified in that facility assessment. So they will spend the month of January putting together those estimates. And then plan for mid-January is when Nandita, who was here the last time during the interview, she is our educational planner, and she will be doing an educational assessment of all the buildings at that time. And that's it for tonight. Any questions, comments?
Thank you for providing us an update. Anybody have any questions for Steven?
While you're thinking on your questions, I'll just offer that we are finding our groove, if you will, with the OmniTech strategic planning process and our facility assessment process. Again, two separate processes, but we're working to share information at points where it will make the most sense, as we had shared with the board previously. So please know that that exchange is happening at key points along the way, and I think it's going to be a really effective and efficient collaboration. I also just want to address that we'll be mapping the timelines of those, and we'll be sharing that with the board. We can put that on, make it available to the public as well, so that we can see where we're headed. I just want to acknowledge the language that we're using about bond planning. We went into this with the RFP, acknowledging our intention was to be preparing likely for a future bond, potentially sinking fund, leaving options open for us. And we've also been pretty public about that November 2026 date. I want us to just also remember, Brad had a wonderful question in that exchange of, I think it was to Brady, you know, what if we're not ready? And so I just want us to keep that in mind and make sure that the public understands that we're moving in that direction, but anywhere along the way, if we sense that we aren't fully ready, or that our community isn't fully ready, that this board will have to make that decision. So just felt the need to say that, because you'll see on the documents, language that will always include facility and bond planning. What questions do you have for Steven?
So this is really getting more into the forest, looking at the trees rather than the whole forest, and probably Brad is the only one who could answer this question, so maybe I should be asking him. But when you walk through a school for a facility assessment, I mean, you look at the walls, you look at, like, can you kind of talk us through what these people are looking at and how they put their heads together and say, "Well, we think we need to fix this"?
Yes, so they'll do, I mean, it's a non-invasive facility assessment, so like, they'll be able to identify areas where there might be carpet deficiencies or tile deficiencies, or walk the total exterior of the building and note, you know, is there cracks in the brick or inside the wall at the same time? They'll get on the roof, they'll take a, you know, review of what they can see up there, review existing documents when things have done, how old is pieces of equipment, if they can, you know, get into the mechanical spaces, you know, we'll go in there and review everything that's in there. And the same thing, I believe our electrical engineer really enjoys, just going, opening every single panel to, you know, see what they look like, how old they are, investigating the infrastructure from there. So that's all part of the steps that they'll be taking a look at along the way.
And has there anybody ever been a situation when you've done a facility assessment, you've gotten to the end and said, "Oh, gosh, we didn't get into this space. I think we need to figure out a way to get into," I mean, I know my space, it'd be the crawl space, right? Or like that attic that was closed off 100 years ago? So do you go back and say, "Oh, I think we need more information"?
Oh, definitely, yeah. But I think that's the benefit in how I've communicated to our team at GMB, like, I'm 15 minutes down the road, like, if you need me to go back and look at something, I will gladly go back and look at something and coordinate it with anyone in the district to get back and do that, so.
Anna and Mike are on point. Anna's kind of leading the logistics of all of this, and they are both well-prepared to make sure that the team has access to anything that they need to see. And if they can't do it within the times that we have blocked, making sure that we schedule additional time for that to happen.
Also, in answer to your question, Ann, Mike Mogenberg has intimate knowledge of every building that we have. He knows, I would dare to say, pretty close to every square inch that he's been into, every ceiling space, crawl space, tunnel, boiler room, and just think of all the places that I've been, of walking, going through various different assessments of the district throughout my time being on the board and/or in my professional life. They're going to get up above the ceilings, they're going to look at different things, and they can't look at every square inch that is there, but they'll get pretty thorough in finding, if you have a keen eye, and you can start looking for what you're exactly looking for to see if there's an issue.
To that point, Brad, Mike will be, when Anna worked to schedule these, he was actually the priority to make sure that we could work with his schedule so that he could accompany the team for these. And what I also love about the process is it's going to start at each building with a brief conversation with the building principal, so they can lift up just concerns that they have, or things that they're noticing about the building that might prompt the team to dig a little deeper in certain areas. I have full faith, after learning about this process, that it will be a very thorough assessment.
Excellent. Thanks, Steven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item 3.7, state budget overview from Anna.
Give Sarah just a second here to get that on up.
Steven, you can feel welcome to go also. Thanks for being here.
All right, so last month, right before our board meeting, the state finally passed their state budget, and I was asked to come back for it in November, give you a little bit highlight of what's going on within there. So we're going to just do a quick look at the fiscal year '25-'26 Michigan K-12 budget and the implications for Midland Public Schools. So looking at our state budget, there's approximately $21.8 billion for K-12 school aid. The per pupil foundation allowance was set at a $10,050 base, which is about a 4.6% increase, or roughly $442. We did see increase for targeted categories, including about a 25% increase for 31A at-risk student funding, as well as sizable increases for English learners and CTE. Free breakfast and lunch got continued support within this budget, which we were able to offer for our students again this year. There is a one-time funding for some infrastructure and facility needs in Section 12E. We are still looking for some more guidance of what exactly that's going to look like, but we know that there are some things coming down the pipeline with there. 31AA mental health and safety grant was continued and increased within this budget. We did see a loss of Sections 147A1 and 147A4, MIPS' cost offsets, which helps school districts offset the cost of retirement costs that we have to pay on our employees. We also did see an elimination of Section 32P, Great Start Collaborative, which assists within communities for early childhood needs for children ages birth to five. 32D Great Start Readiness Program, also known as GSRP, saw a $28.5 million increase, and we are seeing an estimated $10,650 per pupil within there. And then within that $21.8 billion for K-12 school aid, we did see an increase of $400 million for higher education appropriations, which reduces the dollars available for K-12 districts. Within this budget, there is $1.34 billion set aside from K-12 for higher ed and community So looking at what this means for Midland Public in particular, we are looking at a $10,172 per pupil foundation allowance. We are seeing an estimated increase of $1.3 million for our 31A at-risk funding. We did see an elimination of Section 35A5, Early Literacy Added Instructional Time, which was the equivalent around $117,000. And those funds had previously been used for resources for early literacy and tutoring needs. We have an estimated increase of $37,000 for Section 61D CTE incentives. And then we saw a loss of $3.38 million for 147A1 and 147A4 MIPS' cost offsets elimination, and that again was for those retirement costs that we pay as a district. So in a lot of publications, kind of talking about this budget and the increases, show an on-paper estimated increase for Midland Public of $573 per pupil. However, when we're taking things... taking things like our loss of MIPSers cost offsets and grants that are not guaranteed to us, our actual estimated increase is only $41 per pupil. Looking at some areas in the pipeline to watch for MPS, Section 27L Education Compensation, it's funding for educators above the salaries that are mentioned in their collective bargaining agreements. Within here, educator is defined very loosely and includes what you would normally imagine, such as teachers, but also defines it to include custodians, paraprofessionals, food service workers, a lot hired by the district. There's still more information coming on that, and we continue to look to any guidance that comes out on there. Section 164K is a new section this year that includes a 5% state aid penalty for noncompliance in certain areas. Guidance is still forthcoming within there as well. But one area, for example, was that it mandates that we have to require free and reduced applications to the extent federally allowable. But federally, you are not allowed to mandate free and reduced applications for lunches. So, I mean, just kind of an example of what we're working with right now. And then finally, Section 31LA Mental Health and Safety does have funding available, but there are multiple stipulations right now for the acceptance of that fund, and we continue to seek clarity around that grant as well. Are there any questions?
No, no questions, but maybe just to reinforce to the public as people advocate with their representatives that, you know, some of the changes in the state budget are maybe a bit concerning, especially around the lack of the MIPSers flow-through, especially when that was a fully funded fund when we controlled it. But now it's just an obligation mandated by the state. So I think the punchline that you showed, Anna, is the important one to take away is, when all is said and done, it's about $41 of additional funding flowing to our students in the classroom where it matters most. Any other comments or questions for Anna? Okay. I just want to acknowledge that we've had some students here for quite a while, and you probably have other homework. So if you need to leave, please don't feel obligated to stay. But it's up to you. You are welcome to stay. So. Item four is the request to address the board. First on my list is Mr. Don Hinkle. Don?
Evening, Don Hinkle, 309 Morning Meadow Way. This is part two of talking about Northeast Middle School. Every year, there's a Building Sciences Conference, which consists of architects, engineers, and builders. The 2024 keynote speaker was Keith Simon out of Texas, and his talk was architectural coyote scotsey, 10-year, 100-year, and 1,000-year buildings. Coyote scotsey is a Hopi Indian word for life out of balance. He talks about the dumb things architects do to make buildings look pretty, but not very functional. Had lots of examples, probably very funny. But one of the things he said is, if you can make a building last 100 years, you can make it last 1,000 years. Then he goes on and talks. And so I then just did some quick research for old buildings in the United States. So the oldest log cabin in the United States is the Northnagle House in New Jersey, which was built around 1638. The oldest timber frame house in North America is the Fairbanks House located in Massachusetts, built around 1637, is now a museum. Go to Scotland, there's the Stirling Castle, the King's Old Building portion, that was built in 1496. The Michigan Central Train Station in Detroit surged from 1913 to 1988, was then abandoned. Ford Motor Company purchased it in 2014 for 90 million, and they've spent 740 million updating it. Of course, we have our own Midland County Courthouse, which first served in 1926. They spent about 18, 8 million on renovating, and next year, it turns 100 years old. So I've been in it twice. It's quite a nice building. So I've heard about Northeast Middle Schools leaking roofs. So you can either repair it or tear it off and build a whole new one. If, as you do that, you want a 30-year building, 30-year roof or 100-year roof? The technology exists, the difference is in cost. And so the short term might be 400,000, might be three times more to get 100-year roof. So this is going to require a major paradigm shift. But the technology exists now to make buildings last for a very, very, very long time. So from my opinion, destroying Northeast Middle School and building a new one in its place should be permanently off the table. Thank you very much.
Next on the list is Hal Wolf.
Hello, my name is Hal Wolf. I live in Ypsilanti, but I grew up in Midland, graduated from Midland High in 1979, and along with Bruce Scoti, have been a lifelong friend of Dave Randolph. I've worked with people with disabilities for decades and even started my own nonprofit called Running Blind, which supports visually impaired people. Dr. Randolph has a disability. It's a form of early onset cognitive decline resulting in short-term memory loss. Due to that, he's lost his ability to practice medicine. He's no longer able to drive, and he now lives in Colonial Vill. Bruce and I made a commitment to Dave this year, at his request, taking all Dow High home football games. Attending his son's football games was very important to him, and he worked out a support plan so he could attend all five games without any problems. And Bruce and I took that on because it was important to Dave, because he was our friend, and because he needs support. Due to his disability, Dave has a court-appointed guardian who failed to provide Dave with a credit card until fairly recently, and for reasons unclear, the card didn't work at the ticket booth at football games. So it's been frustrating an issue for Dave for the past two years. It should never have been an issue at all, at all, but Dave was stuck. People with disabilities don't want to wear it around like a scarlet letter, and they are usually very reluctant to bring things like this up. I know this to be true for blind people and for people with any form of mental illness. It can be even more difficult. Plus, it's generally invisible, which makes it harder for people to be aware of it if it isn't brought up. And the shame and stigma that keeps, that generally keeps conditions like Dave's in the closet as much as possible. So Dave could have handled things better at the ticket booth, where most of the issues occurred. And he would have basically been forced to admit that his court-appointed guardian hadn't provided him with the necessary means to gain entry without humiliating himself. Dave's stipulation, situation complicated and has been very disruptive to his entire life. He does make mistakes, and he doesn't always make the best choice of words when he is frustrated, but he does the best he can. After Dave had the unfortunate confrontation at the ticket desk, he was later tossed out of the game at the stadium by an unrelenting police officer, and the criminal and his sidekick were caught red-handed eating hot dogs at the time. But I was overjoyed when I found out that, a few days later, the difficulties of Dave's condition had been discussed and a solution was offered. He was being offered a free pass to the stadium for the final two games. That was wonderful, but the exact opposite followed at the very next game, when Dave inadvertently broke a rule that had been tied to the entry pass, which apparently stipulated that Dave wasn't allowed to take part in any of the post-game celebrations. Singling Dave out with no legal basis for his exclusion is discrimination, and it is wrong, regardless of any family issues that are going on in the background. It is not a place for a school to take sides in any such situation, even if a star athlete is involved. But it appears that is what happened here. As to the list of Dave's transgressions, most of them were at the ticket booth, where Dave was being denied entry to an event he wanted to enter very badly. But that was resolved. To then use a two-minute excursion onto the field after the peer game, using that as a rule break, that rule break is the reason to ban Mr. Randolph from all future games was extremely harsh, especially for a disabled man who probably couldn't have remembered the post-game ban. Enforcing that was darn right cruel. Finally, I will say this to the Midland Public School District, your actions effectively trampled Dr. Randolph's rights and his dignity as well. It was wrong, and it should never have happened. Thank you.
Joe Bonadie's?
Greetings. Regarding the disrespect of the grandmother last month that were fast ice, yes, Phil, there are differences in doing work on buildings with students in them versus homes. But fast ice is the only building needing work that currently does not have students in it, and you made no comment that work was actually happening. Yes, I saw the promotional video MPS just put out. Very impressive. Looks like all those trades can now work on school buildings come May instead of fast ice. I look forward to the open house where I can see what $4.5 million buys, as well as ending the over $20,000 per month rental bleed. Buses. After all the discussion two months ago that buses are not really incurring long-term debt for short-lived items, last month, the board approved buying buses for 2015 Phase, with 2015 Phase III funds. These funds you have been paying bond interest on for two and a half years, and will continue to pay interest now through mid-2030s. Since you did not ask for a sinking fund millage on May 4th, will apparently go around on this again for the next bond. I guess interest-free money to cover the smaller, shorter-term items was not important, and the next mega-bond will again be polluted with small stuff burdened by debt. Page 10 of the Open Meeting Act. Email, texting, or other forms of electronic communication among members for a board or commission during an open meeting that involve deliberations towards decision-making or actual decisions violate the Open Meeting Act, since these communications are not open to the public and, in effect, transform the open meeting into a closed session, unquote. Now, I like the new video systems here in the room, and I'm sure it's nice to have a screen in front of you, but you are now aware that there is no Slack text message or other public, out-of-public-view communications allowed. Why do I mention this? The very interesting bio break at the last meeting where a quorum was out in the hall might not have been strange, except for the fact that the secretary had to not only bring notes to the hall, but had to come back in and then go out again with notes into the hall. You're getting sloppy. Even if innocent, you might want to look like OMA means something. Finally, I bring you greetings from the Al Capone Vault. In some ways, John Lauterbach was right about the nothing burger. There is no longer letters to the Board of Education, FOIA requests for MPS. We have not seen RFPs for several things like strategic planners, facilities evaluators, or the buses last month. I don't believe I'm saying it, but the agenda packages were more transparent under Mike Sherrill than they are now. And I did not have to hit 20 links to see them all. And last, on transparency and continuing the trend, the new MPS website follows the previous loss of meeting minutes from 2012 to July of 2020. We are now further deleting our history up to April of 2025. Thank you.
Good evening, Renita Bonadie. I want to follow up on the discussions at the end of the October board meeting. There were several statements that need further clarification and facts. But first, I want to thank this board for making the agenda packets free to the public after being requested for over three years. If the board has nothing to hide, this should never have been an issue, even though they still need some work, which I've discussed. As far as being thankful for the work taken to prepare the agenda packets, let's be clear, those packets are prepared for you, the board, specifically for doing your business at these meetings. They are not prepared for the public or those requesting them through the FOIA process. The district pays the Board of Education Administrative Assistance, Sarah Dooley, to work for you. She's paid to do her job, and she does it well. Again, agenda packets are not prepared for the public, but for you, the board. As far as the cost for redacting agenda packets, there were a few missing facts and some perspective. First, in the past two years, there have been 20 agenda packets out of 34 total that have had redactions. 19 of those only had redactions for addresses for MPS individual donors. In the other case, the names of the students in the IB program were redacted. And those donor letters could be removed, and 95% of the redactions would go away. The comments about the personal information of minors and privacy of others is seldom an issue, but redactable when it does appear. I have only seen a couple of these cases over the three and a half years I've been receiving these agenda packets. Second, the discussion about all of the expenses that MPS will have to absorb for the redaction process. John Lauterbach said that the cost will get absorbed in overhead, and it's a cost, but that's fine. MPS has an annual budget around $110 million. The cost for these agenda packets as currently billed has been 425 per year. So that is a total of .0004% of the MPS budget. Then consider that number is .4% of a FOIA requester's annual income using round numbers. So the board had no problem with the public asking for relief from these FOIA expenses, which have totaled over $1,000 over the past three and a half years. But all of a sudden, we are to feel sorry for MPS to absorb the cost. Where was the concern by this board for the public when asking for relief from these fees? Finally, John Lauterbach stated that it's a little frustrating that we've been involved in litigation for I don't know how long now, over 50 bucks for board packets. I am curious if my lawsuits are really only over 50 bucks. Why hasn't the district settled them then? Or is it because they are really about following FOIA law, which you didn't? Thank you.
That was everybody I had on the list. Anybody else care to address the board?
Hi, Bill Domena. When I watched the presentation by the school resource officer, I have to say I was very impressed. I think it's a great program. And it triggered in my mind something that I said at a previous board meeting, maybe a couple of years ago, when Superintendent Scharr was here, and I sent a letter to Brad. It was about school shootings. And one of the things that I think we really have to make sure of is that when you have a troubled student, you know, someone who has trouble, we try not to make any kind of stigma. But getting that person through the judicial system to get into the NIC system, the National Criminal Information Center, so that they can't buy a firearm unless they have some judicial review. It takes going to a judge to get someone to put that check mark. But again, I just think that's something you really need to consider, because you've got a lot of this covered wonderfully, and I thought those programs were great. But I really worry about certain places where they don't want to do anything in this court system. And I just would, please, consider that. If someone is really troubled, they can always have that taken off their record by a judicial review. But it only takes one mistake. And most of the school shootings, as I said in my presentation back then, were all because a troubled student, known, was not put into the NIC system and could buy a firearm. So just something I think would be very important to consider going forward. But again, it's a wonderful program, and I thought it was very impressive. The other thing is, you're going to be talking about your advisory board. We went to a presentation. We know what's going on with this increased sexualization into the health curriculum, which is not opt-outable, if that's a word. But I really want to make sure, because I looked at your board, and I just want to make sure that you have cultural and ideological diversity in there. I don't know all those people. I only know Wally Leighton, you know, as a reverend. But I really want you to make sure, when you put that program, which has a real indoctrination intent, that the school board at the state just put in there, I think it's very dangerous. And I think your board, who's going to review that, really needs to look at this from a diversity of ideological viewpoints, because I think it's a very dangerous continued sexualization of our children under the guise of health. It's a very left-wing agenda, and I think it's very dangerous. So please consider that when you go through whether you're going to implement that in MPS. Thank you.
So, Bill, I appreciate your comments. I appreciate your comments about the SRO. I don't know the judicial review process that you were talking about, but that's something we can, Kara can follow up on. Our sex education program is not indoctrination, full stop.
The one that was voted on by the state board is definitely indoctrination.
Late last week, the board adopted...
State Board of Education.
The state board adopted new standards. We don't have a ton of information about that yet. It happened late last week.
What MPS does, and what we do in MPS buildings, there's a reason that we have a broad representation of our community involved in the advisory committee. That advisory committee... That advisory committee is made up of many individuals throughout the district, or excuse me, throughout the community, inclusive of parents, administrators, teachers, board members. So, and if you have any questions specifically on what's taught, that's why it's public on our board packet and reviewed by a number of our community members. So feel free to ask us any questions about it, too, but...
I think the other point of clarification in regards to that is that our, the sex education curriculum that is used, anything that is taught is always opt-out, and there is never anything that's forced on a family ever, so.
There was actually just a Supreme Court case that addressed opting out of curriculum. So there's no way at this point in time that we can require any student to take any particular portion of a curriculum.
Anybody else that wanted to address the board?
Hello, my name is John Kowicki. I've lived in Midland for 74 years, more than any of you have been alive. I was in the military for four years, and you add those two numbers together, and it's 78. That's how old I am. Thank you, Midland School System, for teaching me how math, reading, science. I've been sitting back here, and I have no family members with me this time, and normally they say to me, "Don't say anything," because they're afraid I'm going to embarrass them. And I said, "Midland School System set me up for so many wins." Now, I had to do something. My father was merit-based and believed in self-accountability. So I've been going through yearbooks, evaluating my time in the Midland School System, teachers, coaches, administrators, counselors. Most of those people were merit-based and self-accountability, but you got to do something. So recently, I've been attending other meetings, and I'm concerned with this new proposal. Three of us drove down in October to the state school board meeting in Lansing, and then we were there the other day. We also attended a meeting prior to that here in Midland, and we had some pretty powerful people there, and we were told at that meeting it's going to be a 6-2 vote. We knew that before we got there, and I had the privilege to be there and see the interworkings of the system. And one of the words I wrote down as I was listening to educated people around that table, I went, I put the word debacle down. And as I thought about it over the weekend, I went, "That might be too strong," until it came out in national news. They used Michigan as a criteria for the school system, math and reading, and that we're in the bottom 10. Michigan is in the bottom 10. And I'm concerned about this new proposal, how this school board is going to implement that in this... See, I don't have any children or grandchildren in the school system, but I have nieces and nephews, and I'm the oldest person in my family, and I'm going to tell you what, they don't know what's going on. I sat in that meeting, and I listened to what was going on down there and how the Midland School System is going to implement sex with health. And I've got some concerns. Why do young people need to hear some of this stuff? Thank you.
All right. Moving on. Item five, Admin Services. We did have a study committee on November 7th, item 5.1. On November 7th, myself, Jen Ringold, Ann Horowitz, Penny Miller Nelson, Brian Bruton, the members present, guests present were Sarah Dooley, Cynthia Marchesi, and Kara Stark. Meeting started at 12:00 PM. The topics included, one, policy update review. The committee reviewed the recommended policy updates included in the October through and policy update, which includes updates to policies 3118 and 4113. The policy updates will be taken to the Board for Action at the November meeting. Number two, the calendar. The committee discussed the school calendar, including the start date of the school year. And I think Penny will talk about that later. And then item three, Superintendent's Student Advisory Team. Administration shared an update about the Superintendent's Student Advisory Team, and the members will provide an update to the full board at a future meeting, meeting adjourned Item 5.2 for action is the through and policy update.
We have two policies for your consideration this evening. These are actually fairly minor changes. Policy 3118 is our Title IX, Sexual Harassment. The only change in this policy reflects the updated FBI's definition of sexual assault. And then policy 4113 is the Michigan Earn Sick Time Act. This policy is changed to reference a new form that is now available. There is a form that our HR team can use when processing requests for use of earned sick time leave. Those are for your consideration and action this evening.
Take a motion for item 5.2?
Move to approve the policy updates for board policy 3118 and 4113 as presented in the packet.
Support.
Motion by Ringold, support by Horowitz. Any discussion or questions?
For 4113, at the top, it says originally adopted date of 4/21/25 and then last reviewed 4/21/25.
Yes. So... Mike, Ken. The Earn Sick Time Act, we brought a chunk of policies to you all on that date. It's when it first came to light. This is just a minor revision to that. So are you saying we'll update? Is the confusion about the updated date?
Yeah. Why isn't it more current?
It will be...
After?
After you take action, Sarah updates those to reflect today's date.
Okay.
Sorry, I wasn't quite tracking where you were going in the beginning.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor of approving the changes requested in 3118 and 4113, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item six, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, 6.1, meeting minutes.
Yeah, the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Study Committee met on October 20th. Members present were myself, Brad Blazy, Mackie Craig, Ken Weaver, Penny Miller Nelson, and Mary Chilton also joined us. We met here in the admin building. The meeting started at 1:30 PM, and we spent our time with Ken and Mary presenting to us the MPS state assessment data from spring 2025. The meeting adjourned at 2:45.
Item 6.2 for information, 2025-26 Advisory Board on Instruction in Sex Education and Birth Control. Ken?
Yeah, we have the members that were appointed at this point for this year. We will be working on resources as we... One of the items of business the last time the board met was the need to update resources. The resources were over 15 years old. Videos were quite old and grainy, and so we are in the process of doing that. Just to kind of make sure everyone understands, LEAs, which is school districts, determine what content within sexual health instruction they will include in the health education program. LEAs are encouraged to use student and community data, parent input, and community values to determine what content will best support the health and well-being of the students in the district. And the SEAB, or that board, helps oversee that process, as well as the materials will be presented for two board meetings before they're approved. So there's quite a process. Michigan has one of the most robust processes for parent input, and then as well, too, in the end, parents can opt out of the curriculum completely, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Item seven, Finance, Facilities, and Operations, 7.1. Brad, do you have the minutes tonight?
I do. FFO met on November 3rd at 5 o'clock. Members present were myself, Scott McFarland, Ann Horowitz, Penny Miller Nelson, Brian Bruton, and Anna Wommack. Guests present, none. We met here at the Midland Public School Administration Center. We discussed September financials. The September financials were reviewed. Project Lead the Way Laptop Purchase. Administration will propose the purchase of laptops for Project Lead the Way. Summer Tax Resolution. The committee discussed the summer tax resolution. Food Service at Middle Schools. The committee discussed food quality and service at both middle schools. Dowery Street Update. The committee received an update on the sale of the Dowery Street property. Fast Ice Update. The committee received an update on the Fast Ice property improvements. 31AA Mental Health and Safety Grant. The committee discussed 31AA Mental Health and Safety Grant. Facilities Assessment. The committee discussed the facilities assessment. And Strategic Planning. The committee discussed district strategic planning that was ongoing. The meeting adjourned at 5:47 PM.
Thanks, Brad. Item 7.2 for action, Summer Tax Collection Resolution. Anna?
The Michigan Court of Appeals on October 21st, 1985, issued a major decision interpreting the 1982 Summer Tax Collection Statute. In its ruling upholding the constitutionality of the law, the appellate court stated that despite prior practices, school districts must adopt an annual resolution for summer tax collection. An ongoing request is not sufficient. The Court of Appeals held that an annual formal action by the board is required prior to January 1st of each year for which the board intends to collect taxes in the summer. The Midland Public Schools collect summer taxes only on property in the city of Midland. All school taxes in the townships are levied in December. If approved, a copy of the signed resolution to collect summer taxes on property in the city of Midland will be provided to the city and a copy attached to the original at these minutes.
Thank you, Anna. Do I have a motion to approve the Summer Tax Collection Resolution?
Yes, I will move to approve the Summer Tax Collection Resolution.
Motion by McFarland, support by Ringold. This does require a roll call vote, but before we do that, is there any discussion or questions?
Do we need to read any part of the resolution out loud, or can we just roll call vote on it? Okay, all right. Ready?
Go ahead.
President Roush?
Yes.
Vice President McFarland?
Yes.
Secretary Ringold is a yes. Trustee Blazy?
Yes.
Trustee Craig?
Yes.
Trustee Horowitz?
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is 7.3 for action, Project Lead the Way Laptop Purchase. Anna?
Administration is seeking approval to deliver a purchase order to People Driven Technology of Byron Center, Michigan, for $72,359 and 4 cents, for 192 Dell Latitude 3140 Windows laptops to provide replacement devices for use with Project Lead the Way at all four secondary schools. The existing devices were purchased in 2015, run Windows 10, which Microsoft ended support for in October 2025, and will not run Windows 11. The pricing provided is through the REMC Save bid and follows board purchasing policy. This expenditure will be paid for from the STEM grant if approved.
Thanks, Anna. I have a motion for item 7.3.
So moved. Support.
Motion by Horowitz, support by Ringold. Any further discussion or questions for Anna? All in favor of approving the laptop purchases listed in 7.3, say aye.
Aye.
7.4 for action, gifts totaling $72,500. Anna?
We have two items tonight totaling $72,500 that will require your acceptance on behalf of the board this evening. These items are donation from HH Dow High Sports Boosters to Dow High for support for video scoreboards in the gym, the amount of $67,500, and a donation from Midland Rotary Foundation to Juvenile Justice Center to support athletic shoe incentives for course completion in the amount of $5,000. We would request that you approve accepting these gifts this evening.
Is there a motion for item 7.4?
So moved. Support.
Motion by Ringold, support by Horowitz. Any further discussion or questions? Thank you for the generous gifts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries. Item 7.5 for information, gifts. Anna?
The total amount of gifts listed for information only tonight is $19,623.84. These gifts this evening represent support for programs ranging from support for robotics at Jefferson and Northeast Middle Schools, classroom libraries at Chestnut Hill Elementary, athletics at Dow High, Model UN at Midland High, and more. As is tradition, all donors are going to be recognized in the credits of this evening's broadcast and also through board correspondence upon your behalf. We are grateful to our community's support of our students and our programs.
Thank you. Item eight, Human Resources, 8.1, HR Study Committee, meeting minutes from October 27th.
Yes, I will try to read as eloquently and excitedly as Brad read his meeting minutes. The Human Resources Study Committee met on October 27th, 2025. Members present, Ann Horowitz, Mackie Craig, Scott Farland, Cynthia Marchesi, Penny Miller Nelson, Kara Stark. Guests present, Anna Wommack. The meetings started at noon. We discussed the Midland City Education Association contract update. Administration shared an update about the calendar insurance and preschool committees, which stem from contract negotiations. We also discussed the Midland Federation of Paraprofessionals contract status update. The district and NFP will soon engage in negotiations as the contract expires on June 30th, 2026. We received a legal update on the current legal matters with the school district. We discussed staffing. Administration shared challenges with filling special education vacancies this year due to changes in teacher certification requirements. The committee discussed recruiting strategies and upcoming educational job fairs. We also discussed Welcome to the Number Midland. Information was shared about the Welcome to Midland initiative, which aims to help new community members feel connected. If you haven't Googled it, Google it, it's really cool. And finally, strategic planning. The committee discussed the strategic planning process, and the meeting adjourned at 12:57 PM.
Thank you, Ann. Item 8.2 for information, retirements. Kara?
Cheryl Vandenboom, paraprofessional at Central Park Elementary, has announced her retirement effective November 30th, 2025.
And item 8.3 for information. Kara?
The board and staff extend their deepest sympathies to the following families. Paul Dusso, who passed away on October 20th, 2025. Paul's employment with MPS began in 1980, and he held numerous positions throughout his tenure, including AV technician, media technician, middle school technician, and workstation manager. Paul's position was downsized in 2006, at which point he ended his career with 26 years of service. Dean Plummer, who passed away on October 17th, 2025. Dean's employment with MPS began in 1961, and he held many positions throughout his tenure, including secondary speech teacher, drama and debate teacher, assistant principal at Central Intermediate School, assistant principal at Jefferson Middle School, and driver's education instructor. Dean retired in June of 1995 with 34 years of service. Thomas Muto, who passed away on November 1st, 2025. Thomas's employment with MPS began in 1972 as an elementary and special education teacher in the cognitively impaired program at Sugnet Elementary and Longview Elementary. Thomas retired in June of 2004 with 32 years of service. He also served as a substitute teacher following his retirement. in the cognitively impaired program at Sugnet Elementary and Longview Elementary. Thomas retired in June of 2004 with 32 years of service. He also served as a substitute teacher following his retirement. Jorge Peña, who passed away on November 2nd, 2025. Jorge's employment with MPS began in 1997 as a teacher at Northeast, and he taught many different subjects throughout his tenure, including industrial technology, basic computer skills, business computer skills, computer design, career courses, woodworking, and US history. Jorge retired in June of 2018 with 21 years of service. Jean Pearson, who passed away on November 3rd, 2025. Jean's employment with MPS began in 1994 as a curriculum coordinator. Jean transitioned to the role of office technical professional at Plymouth, the position which she retired from in June of 2010 with 16 years of service. She also served as a substitute office professional following her retirement.
Thank you, Kara. Item nine are correspondents from the Board of Education to the following individuals and/or entities listed in your agenda packet. Item 10, scheduled activities for information. Our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting is on December 15th. And proposed dates for 2026. Item 11, study session discussion. As we're coming into 2026, I'd like in 11.1 to nominate the following slate of individuals for the Officer Nominating Committee and then come back to the board to make a recommendation in January. Nominate myself as current board president, Scott McFarland, and Jen Ringold. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of myself, Scott, and Jen, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Are there any points of clarification from board members?
I do have a quick point of clarification during public comment. There was a remark made about me leaving the room with notes or minutes. I'd like to make sure that it's clarified that I did not leave the room. At that time, what the camera angle shows, Ray, is only part of the room. I took, actually signed, thank you letters and brought them over to Sarah Dooley and then came back to my seat. So just to make sure that that's clarified.
Also note, just as we come towards the end of the year, we'll also be starting our superintendent evaluation process. So I'll reach out to each of you with a rubric, get the forms in your hands so that you can start to take a look at them. Penny, at that point, will add her input as well. So we'll come, I'll send each of you guys emails on that process so that we start to prepare for it individually. And then, just finally, again, on sex education, just to reiterate, and just a quick search of the news articles that have come out in the last 24, 48 hours, reiterate, and this is even from the State Board of Education itself, that local districts matter. We have local control in Michigan for a reason. There's a reason that seven of us are elected by our peers in the community, and it's because parent involvement matters, community input matters. Anything that this district does in terms of sex education is part of our process that will not change. Local control is important for a reason, and it's so that our community has input. So the process in which we do this will not change. So look forward to parent and community involvement as part of that process since by law, we have to have half of the representation from the parents of our students. That's everything I had. Any other board members before I turn it over to Penny?
I did want to make a general comment. I certainly speak for myself. I assume it's true for the entire board. We appreciate public comment, we enjoy public comment. Sometimes people get up and they start talking, and I'm like, oh, gosh, where are they going? And by the end, I'm nodding my head in agreement. I would add that public comment that contains snarky remarks, like having to click on 20 links, is inconvenient, or that a meeting time is inconvenient for a member of the public, I don't think that those add to the messages that you're trying to convey to us, and I think they actually detract from what individuals are trying to say and distract. So I would encourage you to think carefully about what you say to the board and to the general community who watches these meetings.
I do have a healthy list of updates I want to share, so here we go. The first one is in regards to our start date of school for next school year. As you all know, we did not rush to a decision about that. We wanted to gather all the facts and interact with the Midland County Fair Board and others, and I'm glad that we did that. It's been our goal all along to make sure that we were prioritizing what was best for students, followed by our staff and our parents and our school community. We have received feedback and some here at public comment from supporters of 4H and the fair encouraging us to avoid conflicts. I've received feedback from others with the opposite message, that we should not prioritize just a couple hundred students attending the fair and that we should stick with our traditional schedule. So that conflicting feedback only reinforced our need to really study this. We did have an opportunity, thanks to Brian, who stepped in while I was at a strategic planning session. He went out and had a really wonderful conversation with the Midland County Fair Board, and I think there was some mutual understanding of the challenges they face and the complexity that we face in creating a calendar that meets all of our state requirements and is best for all of our stakeholders. So thank you to them for that conversation and to Nick Hall, the fair manager, for helping to facilitate that. And also to Dee Howe, who is the 4H program coordinator, who offered us some data about the number of students involved. There are a lot of students involved in 4H and the fair. For Midland Public, I think her estimate was close to 250, 300. Not all of those students would have an actual animal or live exhibit at the fair, but it's enough that we know that it does create some challenges. So after our discussion with the fair and better understanding where we are, we are making the decision to move forward with a calendar that will not conflict with the start date of the fair. And I just will put out some information to the public with our rationale, but it's important to me that as board members, you understand that that is a complex endeavor. We took into account those 250 students and what it means for them. We took into account the need for us to have a consistent start date across our county. When we share career and tech ed programs and students come to us and our students go out to Coleman, for example, we have particular requirements about the minutes and hours of instruction that we're accountable for, and there was jeopardizing that if we don't have that common start date. We also understand that we have staff members who have children involved with the fair. There could be implications for staff attendance that we wanted to avoid the impact on all of our students. We also discovered that we have many athletic teams and clubs that volunteer and even fundraise at the fair. And again, when it doesn't conflict with our values and our mission, we really strive to be good community partners. And I believe that Brian understood more clearly on our behalf, after talking with the fair board, that this is their week to shine. It's where they make their revenue to be able to sustain a lot of the wonderful activities they do and the impact across the community, and we certainly want to be good partners in that. So we believe we can create a calendar. I want to just remind us that that is a negotiated item with the MCEA, and we'll begin that process this week, next week? Very soon, next week. So we can't say for certain how all of this will play out, but we believe we can create a calendar that avoids the conflict, also preserves that semester one will end before we enter winter break. That was something that we heard was important to a lot of our families, that there is that clean break, and we think we can create a calendar that's going to meet the needs of everyone. And I'll just say on a personal note, I'm happy that we could make this happen. When Brian agreed to go out to meet with the fair board, I was a little jealous. That's my background, so if anyone understands the importance of 4H, FFA, raising animals, it's me, and so I'm glad that we can figure out a way to make this work and honor those students as well. My next highlight is to just notify the board that school of choice for semester two will be opening soon, early December, December 8th, I believe, through December 14th. I want to remind us that school of choice is restricted by school and grade level to open seats that we have. In our previous facility planning and bond conversations, we shared a lot of details about certain grade levels in schools where we do have some crowding and some over enrollment, if you will, and you will see when this is published that there are clear areas where we are not accepting applications. The new system we have, just to be clear with our public, these screens are one-way, they're not interactive. It is simply a smaller version of what we see up there. That is the only change that's happened here at the board table, with the exception of a little control panel here where I can mute people. So I won't be doing that to anyone, but these are not interactive screens. Letters went out to families, to parents and guardians notifying them that on November 25th, the survey, the Student Life Survey, which is a survey we issue in partnership with the Legacy Center, that's going to happen in all four of our secondary schools, grades six through 12. It's actually happening in all schools across Midland County, grades six through 12. This survey, again, is done in collaboration with the Legacy Center, and the goal is to learn more about today's youth, what we see as their strengths and their challenges. This is a very similar survey to what we've issued every five years since 2005, so that longitudinal data is really important. And this data, once available, is what many of our local nonprofits who serve youth use to create their programming and support the work that we do here at Midland Public Schools, at Coleman, the ESA, Meridian, Bullet Creek, and so on. In the letter that parents received, we made it very clear that there was an opt-out process that was as simple as filling out a form, and of course, we're following up on that to make sure that we follow through on all of those opt-outs. I think we've already talked about the health and sex ed education, so I'll pass that one. More to come in the future. Our Dower Street property purchase agreement is still active, thanks to Anna and Brian, who continue to run point on this. Again, as a reminder, this is a really wonderful opportunity to sell that property and to get that 10-year agreement for our Building Trades program, to have homes to build in collaboration with Habitat. Again, we're progressing, but we have run into a couple of glitches with two encroachments. One is a driveway encroachment that I think we might be near resolution on, and then a more recently discovered water line, and the city has been a good partner with us so far in working through this, and we're going to remain optimistic that we can have those two encroachments resolved and proceed with the closing of that sale.
And just to reiterate, what are we doing with the property once it is sold?
Yeah, Habitat's going to build homes.
With our?
With our Building Trades students. It's going to be really lovely to have wonderful homes for individuals and families here in our community. We all know housing is an important issue for us, and to have that guarantee of building with Building Trades is really exciting. I want you all to know that we've had two meetings of the superintendent student advisory team already this year. It is a great group. We've expanded a bit to 27 members. These are students, grades nine through 12, Dow High, Midland High, and our PATHS program is represented. We had some really great conversation at our last meeting. They have a real desire to want to have a voice and interaction with all of you. We talked about the opportunity of a student representative on the board, and other districts across our country and state have taken up this model where, you know, a student is identified through various ways. Obviously, they're not a voting member, they're not an elected official, and they attend board meetings. After talking with this student group and talking with our administrative services team, study committee, I think the students have realized that that is not really the most influential way to interact with the board, and they're really excited about the opportunity to come on a more regular basis, share updates of what they're thinking, what they're doing, and interact with you all. And so after talking with Admin Services Study Committee and President Roush, we've agreed to build them into our agenda on a more regular basis, and they will be with us in December to provide you all with an update about what the committee is overall, what their experience has been, to share some highlights of their time being MPS students, and honestly, to share a couple of areas where they see an opportunity for us to do better and be better. So stay tuned for that. I think the rest of these can hold. They were just kind of odds and ends. I guess I will just give one shout out. You know, we have two teams from Dow High and one from Midland High who've qualified again for the AH Nicholas Innovation Award. That is, it's just fun to see each year that we continue to have teams who make it to that kind of semifinal round to present their STEM innovative ideas, and can't wait to hear how they do.
I just want to say thanks to you and Brian for the collaboration with the fair board. And, you know, two months ago, we heard from parents that were concerned about the start date, and at the time, we had talked about the concerns that we had and why the schedule is the way that it is, but at the same time, we also committed to those parents to work with them and figure this out. We didn't make a rash decision, but collected all the facts, investigated the type, all the things that we encourage our students to do.
Yes, yes.
We emulated and did. So just want to say thank you for the collaboration and thanks to the fair board for their participation in the process as well.
Thanks for that. We, oh, Dan's still here. We have a press release that Katie's created, we'll send out. It's a little interesting to put out a press release that says, hey, we maybe know the start date, but we don't have a calendar, so stay tuned, but we at least want folks to know what our start date will be.
I think we can get done in 23 minutes. What do you think, Penny?
I was going to say, I don't think we can.
All right, so.
What if we just do a modest extension of the meeting, just to give us a buffer so we don't feel rushed?
And we don't come out to go longer.
Yes.
Does 15 minutes extra sound okay?
Yeah.
9:45. Can I get a motion then to?
I will move to extend the board meeting by 15 minutes, which will take us to 9:45 PM. Support.
Motion by Horowitz, support by Ringgold. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hey, you want to take motion 12, then?
Certainly. Motion to go into closed session for consideration of a written opinion of legal counsel as permitted under MCL 15.268, section 8, 1H.
Motion by Horowitz.
Support.
Support by McFarland. Any discussion, questions? Jen, can you take roll call vote, please?
President Roush.
Yes.
Vice President McFarland.
Yes.
Secretary Ringold is a yes. Trustee Blasey.
Yes.
Trustee Craig.
Yes.
And Trustee Horowitz.
Support.
Motion carries.
Move into closed session. Move into closed session.
All right, we're back. Are we back?
I didn't.
Okay. Would you like a motion to adjourn? They're back. We're back. We're back.
All right. Back in open session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We're adjourned.
Thank you.
All right.